To the Tacoma Park City Council meeting tonight, tonight we have a special meeting. It's one of our budget work sessions that we have throughout the month of April. And I'd like to call this special meeting of the city council to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Stewart.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Tavala. Is here. A councilmember Kostick.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Smith. And councilmember Circe.
Great. Terrific. All right. So this is our second week in a row doing budget work session on Monday evening. Last week, we went through the capital budget and a recording of that meeting is available on the city website, as well as the presentation and supporting materials. Tonight, we're going to turn it over to the city staff to walk us through our evening tonight. And when they're done, we'll discuss that and we'll also begin our conversations about reconciliation. So I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you so much. Tonight, we'll be going through the operating budget. I do have many of the senior staff here with the council this evening. I'd like to start off with a special welcome of our new deputy public works director and Daryl, our public works director. Would you like to see, David, you want to put your video on and? Here we go. And Daryl, could you say a few words and then David?
For sure. Good evening, council. I'm with great pleasure. Ready to introduce David Eubanks, who's started today, his first day with Public Works Department. He'll be serving in the deputy position, which is one that hasn't been in place for quite a while. So we're looking forward to everything he can bring to the city. Had a very, very good first day filled with meeting everybody, site tour, and, and we've got lots of trainings and, and things planned. So I look forward to having him meet each of you directly and getting the opportunity to meet in the, in the community. David's got a impressive history of, of work and background and the skillsets that he'll bring to the city are ones that will really enhance what the department's able to do with the community. So really looking forward to, glad to have him on board and looking forward to working with him.
David, you would like to say a few words?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to join you today. Many of your faces look very familiar. I've snuck into several city council meetings to, to observe what the, the city of Tacoma Park is all about. I, I'm a neighbor. I live in, in Tacoma DC. So I'm very familiar with the city. In fact, I used to live even closer, just above the bus boards, just adjacent to Tacoma Park. And, and since being there, kind of fell in love with the city and have been following the, the work that the city council does, as well as staff for, for quite a while. So I'm really excited about joining. I did have a really wonderful first day. So Darrell, thank you for that. And everyone who dropped by to say hello and, and sent very kind emails. I'm really excited about what you do and contributing as best as I can to the staff, to the city council and to residents. So thank you for having me.
Thank you. We're so excited. And Darrell, the idea of having a little bit of help on that workload is magnificent. So thanks, thanks very much. Okay, I think I'm going to, I think I'm going to go ahead and ask City TV to call up the PowerPoint for this evening and we'll go through the operating budget presentation. The regular slide view. There we go. Okay, next slide, please. So I'm going to go over just a few things that I went over the first time when I originally presented the budget in early April. The proposed budget is a maintenance of effort budget. And as you'll see this evening, very little difference in terms of numbers of employees or activities in the operating budget. I've proposed a small tax rate increase to 55 cents per $100 assessed value. And, and we'll go through what that means and some of the options related to that. Mostly, we are not discussing federal American Rescue Plan Act funds. There will be future discussions about how those funds might be used. We'll only need to wait for guidance from the US Treasury Department. But there are a few places where we've cited them and we'll note those. Next, please. And just a reminder that we've, each year, we make better improvements to the budget document. And very pleased with the information that we can present you to allow for as much information and understandable information that you need. Next. So tonight, we'll go, we'll mostly be going through key points of the budget, including the departmental reviews. Next. So we are at April 26th, the budget work session on the operating budget. On Wednesday, we'll have a public hearing on the tax rate and the budget. And then one week from today is final budget reconciliation. So we do not have a lot of time. Please recognize that we'll be working hard to get you the information you need for reconciliation. Next. Once more, there is a proposed tax increase. If you look at the graph, the blue line to, on the left-hand side is the constant yield rate, which is the amount that would get us the same amount of revenue as the previous year. Usually, the final rate is a little higher than the constant yield number, but there have been times when it's less. The each cent of the real property tax equals approximately $258,000. And this will become important as you talk reconciliation. The constant yield tax rate is 52.95 cents per $100. And the constant yield tax rate plus the employment cost index of wages and benefits is 54.17 cents. Next. I presented these, these graphs before, but it shows that we have increasing net assessable base. A reminder that this fall, there will be new assessments underway in Tacoma Park. And next week, next year, February 14th, you'll find out what the new assessable base is in the city. And that will mean a lot of, that will provide a lot of information for how you go through next year's budget. Next. We have four funds. The general fund is the one that represents most of the activities that you'll be paying attention to tonight. We have discussed the stormwater fund and special revenue fund primarily during the capital discussion last week. One of the things just to mention here in, in the graph is that the blue section, which is about half of the budget, is from real property tax, which is mostly for single-family homeowners. The orange is intergovernmental revenue. It's a little bit higher this year simply because we're using some ARPA funds for last, replacing lost revenue from past year. The, the yellow on the top is all other revenue, which is fees and that kind of thing. And so the dip that you'll see for this current year FY21 is primarily the loss of recreation fees for not having the recreation programs. The gray in the middle is income tax revenue, and it stayed about the same proportion of the income for the city for quite some time. Next. So this is information I presented before. The property taxes represent 53% of the revenue for the general fund. Interjurisdictional, does this time include $1.2 million in federal ARPA funds offsetting lost revenue? The, this is also the place where tax duplication funds come into play, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Income tax is about 13% of our revenue for the general fund. Next. I mentioned the charges for services are down this year. One of the things that we always talk about is the level of reserves. Our unassigned general fund balance, which is our unassigned reserve, is about $2.8 million. This is less than it should be. It should be $4.66 million. In a normal year, I would be very uncomfortable with putting $2.8 million towards the unassigned reserve. Because we are getting ARPA funds and those funds could be used if we had a sudden loss of revenue or to, that is related to the pandemic, we can use those funds for that. So there's a certain cushion for that purpose that we did not have last year and in a couple of years won't have. But it is something that, that I think helped us at least maintain, do a maintenance of effort budget rather than laying off staff and, and cutting programs. Next. Personnel costs and FTEs. The FY21 budget removed some of our personnel costs. We, we did savings because we had fewer part-time staff. We didn't do some of the, we didn't, we thought we weren't going to do as much overtime, that kind of thing. The FY22 budget anticipates filling the part-time and full-time staff positions that had been kept vacant in FY21 and providing a modest wage increase. We are in, hopefully, final discussions with our two unions on the outcome of contract reopeners for wages. The personnel cuts that were, personnel costs for departments that were largely fully staffed are very similar. Some departments, such as the rec department, really needs to be compared to FY20 to understand the staffing and costs. The change in full-time equivalents positions is down about a quarter of a person. This is a compilation of a new full-time communications position that I'm proposing to have added to the budget and to the, to the city, offset by cuts in some personnel, some part-time hours. So the net effect is a reduction in full-time of equivalence of .24. Next. And it was a little bit of confusion about the full-time equivalent, so I wanted to show the chart. There was an early version, I think, of, of the binders that was presented. We're prepared for the council members to have an error in, in the document. So I just want to go through very quickly and we'll see this when we go through the departments. There were no changes in staff for general government. In police, it only goes up .01 of FTEs. It's really calculation of crossing guard hours. So essentially, no change in police, no change in public works, a decrease of almost a person in recreation that's related to reduction in part-time hours as we slowly move into services for the rec department. No change in numbers of positions for housing and community development. An increase of a position in communications minus a decrease of some part-time hours. So the net increase is .6. A very small increase in library. It represents some additional hours for our part-time children librarian, who's picking up extra hours as we do some transitions with our regular teen and youth librarian retiring on, in June, so, I mean, July. So we're trying to make sure that we have those services provided. And those of you who follow social media will know that she does a marvelous job with kids and has really been providing essential services through the pandemic. There's no change in stormwater management hours or in speed camera FTEs. And there's no positions associated with the special revenue fund. Next. So the, our approach to our budget process was assuming that we're, we'll face into full in-person service by January of 2022. Some city facilities are likely to open by September. Certainly, our recreation department is starting to ramp back into providing services and hopefully some summer camp work. They've got a wonderful selection of programs. Now we just need the kids. So we're, we're looking forward to that. As we look at the budget, funds for assistance to residents and small businesses that have been hurt by the pandemic will come from ARPA. That's the purpose of the ARPA funds. So we do not have the COVID-19 fund in this budget. It would be replaced with ARPA funds, which are much larger. If we are fortunate in the description of other activities that can be funded out of ARPA, there may be a variety of things that we'll want to pursue that are one-time expenditures or short-term expenditures out of ARPA funds that will help advance the needs of the city and hopefully save money for the city in the long run. Whether that's a technology improvement or some capital investments that need to get done, that don't then need to come out of tax money in the future. Next. So one area of flexibility to meet city goals is $300,000 that has been put in the non-departmental budget, but it's an opportunity to have the council determine that some fund should go to some things that are important, that weren't in a maintenance of effort budget. And so those include funds for resident survey, which I would strongly encourage, especially with the new city manager and kind of coming out of the pandemic, thinking freshly about what needs are, could be very useful. Again, another highly recommended option are funds for engineering work related to flooding across private properties. I would think that that's $150,000 to $200,000 of work. There's been discussion of an equity officer for the city. And there has been some discussion that perhaps it could be a shared position with another municipality at a, at a price of about $60,000 as opposed to a full-time position. There's also been interest expressed in discussions with council members for the Tree Canopy Pilot Project and for a variety of climate change resilience actions that might not be addressed by Montgomery County, which has started to do some, you know, work there, or our existing sustainability program. And again, if there may be some technology improvements that we would like to see that would help advance city goals that don't meet the criteria for ARPA funds. So those are things that could be identified out of that $300,000. A note that $300,000 represents just over a cent on the property tax rate. So that's something to take into consideration as you're looking at what might come from those funds. Next. One of the things that I really want to caution as you're making some determinations about what you'd like to see in the future is that long-term financial stability is important for the city. It's one of our responsibilities as fiduciary responsibilities that we have, both as staff and as the council has. And it's always a question that is asked of me. How does, how are we looking in the out years going forward? And frankly, we're very tight. We're, we're, have not quite kept up with the cost of expenses and with the ongoing revenue that is in our tax budget. What I'd like to encourage is that we really look at keeping a similar amount of ongoing revenue to ongoing expenses now and going forward. And part of the reason that we've had some difficulty with that, I think there's two main reasons. One is the council wants to provide more services. Every single year, there's a more interest in, in helping people and I really strongly appreciate that. Staff is required to do those services, whether it's on, whether it's full-time staff that are personnel in the city or it's contracted, there is expense. The other part is tax, municipal tax duplication and the fact that Montgomery County has not kept up its share of the bargain of municipal tax reimbursements to the city. And that has been frozen essentially since FY2012. The, while the transportation numbers sometimes don't increase a lot year from, from year to year, they're more geared towards, road maintenance costs tend to be more associated with when there are storms or not storms. So there's some variability there. The major issue for Tacoma Park is the police rebate. The police rebate would be heavily associated with the cost that Montgomery County pays its officers for service at a certain level of public service. And they've not kept that up. We've really have been absorbing the increase in the cost of services for each year after year after year, while receiving really very flat rebates from Montgomery County. There are been a number of pushes this year to finally get this straightened out, to get a rebate. There is a government operations committee meeting on Friday with, of the county council on tax duplication. There's some interest in finally listening to municipalities about how to handle that. If the amount that is asked for FY22, which does not really include an increase in police rebate money, it's, it's just road transportation money. But if that amount that has been asked for for FY22 is fully funded by the county council, the city of Tacoma Park would get about $468,000 more for FY22. That's about 1.8 cents on the tax rate. So it is significant and we're going to push it for all it's worth. Appreciate residents who have been speaking to the county council members on it. They need to keep that up because this has real pocketbook implications. And so I'd like to see that dealt with. So we will see how that goes. Final discussion about that amount is not going to happen before your budget reconciliation. There may be some options if there's a decision before the final tax vote. But I think it is something just to keep in mind that we, we may, we took, we took a guess last year that we were going to get a little bit more and it didn't work. So I don't want to take a risk and, and that increase in money is not included in my proposed budget. It's simply information for you. The other thing that isn't very important is that we have to increase economic development in Tacoma Park. The proportion of the tax base that's paid by commercial property owners is small compared to most municipalities. And so thinking about a way to better distribute the tax base among our single-family homeowners, institution, institutions and businesses is really important. And so that is one of the reasons that the council passed the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan in the past years. And it's why we are pushing forward as best we can to implement those. Next. So I'll go through the departments and I'll go through them relatively quickly. There's more information in the budget book, but I want to go through at a fairly high level and then answer your questions. As you saw, most of our senior staff is on this meeting, so there's specific questions that are available for that. The general government section of the budget includes legislative, which is the city council, general management, which is city manager's office, finance, legal services, which is our city attorney and our labor attorney, information systems, human resources and city clerk. There's no proposed FTE change in all of those units. The projected budgetary change is about 2%. Budget highlights are that you'll be preparing, you'll be preparing for a new city manager. And, and that city manager may need some things that we can anticipate, but we have tried to present a fairly straightforward budget. The general government units will be heavily involved in managing ARPA funds when those become available. The other thing, just as a highlight, is that legal services are somewhat unpredictable. And so as we go through and look at that, just remember that those, that those items may have to be changed over the course of the year depending on legal demand. Next. The police department, I've seen some, a number of questions about the police department. It includes the following divisions, the office of the chief, communications, which is the dispatch unit, operations, which is the largest part of the department, criminal investigations, administrative services and neighborhood services. There's no FTE change. It's really 0.01 FTE change, which is a change in the number of, a slight calculation change in crossing guard hours. The protected budgetary change from FY21 to FY22 is 7%. And I know people have wondered about that. It is a maintenance of effort budget. It is a maintenance of effort budget. There is simply nothing there other than personnel. The increase in personnel costs between FY 21 and FY 22 primarily are fringe benefits. I think there's some change in overtime numbers. One of the things you'll remember is that we cut some aspects of the police budget at the, in preparing the FY 21 budget. There was changes in overtime, in conferences, that kind of thing, recognizing that we wouldn't be having the, some of the various police activities that they, you know, events and things that they have to participate in. One of the things that did happen though, is that we had a very lively year and we had protection needed for some of our more influential residents in Tacoma Park. So there was a lot of overtime actually spent. So when we look at these numbers, there's not necessarily a key matchup. The 7% does not represent new people. It does not represent, although it does mean, it does represent us being fully staffed. And it does not represent anything above the very basic fringe benefits for pension, health insurance and that kind of thing. So we do have, I know the deputy police chief is on this and the police chief may be able to be on. He had been traveling. I would like to call your attention that non-personnel expenditures decreased by five and a half percent. So we really, it's very tight and and when we go through, there's very little that can be cut or delayed. Unless staff is laid off. Next slide please. The speed camera fund also is associated with the police department and it represents three positions. There's a slight change there, a 7% change for that small unit. That's primarily related to the service costs of the contract for speed cameras, not personnel. Next. The public works department includes a number of divisions, administration, building maintenance, equipment maintenance, right-of-way, solid waste, sustainability, vegetation management, urban forest and city engineer. There's no FTE change from the FY 21 budget to the FY 22 budget. The projected budgetary change is 3.66%. It also is a maintenance of effort budget. But there's a different personnel cost reason when it comes to, to the public works budget. And that is the deputy public works director and the vegetation maintenance supervisor are expected to work for the full year in FY 22 when they were not in FY 21. Non-personnel expenditures decreased by 3.3%. And we have many sustainability efforts envisioned for the year. It has to do with public outreach and implementation of climate action initiatives, coordination with the county, which they've finally become more active and developing implementation plans for the climate emergency response resolution as well as continuing programs to assist low-income residents, businesses and multifamily properties with energy efficiency improvements. And note that although it's not said here, is envisioned that many of those improvements will be coming along with some of the other activities that may come out of the ARPA funds. So how do we improve buildings? How do we help our small businesses? And also make sustainability improvements that really make a difference going forward. Next. The next section that's associated with public works is the stormwater fund. There's a, there's no FTE change. There's a decrease of about 2.4% in the budget. It is a maintenance of effort budget. There's a slight decrease in capital expenditures. And because we had to be very careful about the stormwater fund this year. I think the big work plan issue with stormwater fund this year is transferring to the new tiered fee system, setting up the credits and the other processes that the council is envisioning. So besides the actual stormwater work that they will do, there are those work activities. Again, we're looking to see if ARPA funds can be used for stormwater. That is a determination that we're waiting to hear from the Department of Treasury. If so, we would be adding a lot of work to this unit and that would have to come from the ARPA funds. Next. The recreation department includes administration, youth outreach, the rec center, community programs, athletic fields, camps, before and after school programs and the Tacoma Park Community Center. There's a net drop of about one FTE. But the budgetary change is about an 11% increase. The department's moving to, is, is working to move safely back to full-service operations as the pandemic restrictions ease. Scholarship funds for families that are negatively affected from the pandemic are to come from ARPA. And we've already designated some of those funds from ARPA to help offset the last, anticipated loss revenue of the rec department. Knowing that a number of our families are not going to be able to afford summer camp or the other kind of before and after school activities that are needed so that the parents can go to work. Next. Housing and community development includes administration, economic development, arts and humanities, planning and housing. No FTE change is planned, but a vegetarian change of about 8%, so a substantial increase in the budget. The personnel increase, personnel cost increased by about 21.5%, while operational costs decreased by 11.4%. We're anticipating a full year of a housing and community development director. So we're working on that. And that position has been vacant this year. And there's some small upgrades to several existing positions. The work plan for the department is very heavy. Many of you have seen the work that they have been doing this past year. It will continue to be heavy, both in quantity and, and in the importance of the work. They will also be really keenly involved in implementation of ARPA activities. And so they will likely need to expand to do contracts and have limited term positions as a future discussion with council. Next. Communications includes our communication specialists, the city TV activities and the newsletter. Again, the proposed FTE change is 0.6, which is one new full-time media specialist less some part-time FTE hours. It's an 18.4% budget increase. Primarily because when you replace two part-time interns with a full-time employee, there's fringe benefits and, and the expenses that come with all that. But that additional communications position is critically needed. It is also not one that would be temporary in nature. We need more than one person to do communications for the city of Tacoma Park. And so we're, we anticipate that there would be even more positions that would be needed, that would be short-term in nature related to expanded information related to ARPA funds and, and grant opportunities. But for an ongoing, for the ongoing work of this unit, we would need another person. The budget highlights are some web upgrade, upgrade and redesign. Not all of the funds are available in this budget to do that. We would anticipate some can come out of the ARPA funds, but we've got about $34,000 in this budget towards the work related to the website upgrade. Next. The library, we've got the library and the computer learning center in a regular year. Those would be distinct things and we'd go through it and we're really in a different place this year, obviously. There's a small proposed FTE change, as I mentioned, for the part-time children librarian. The, but the proposed budgetary change is a decrease of about 6.4%. Personnel costs decreased by 3%, operational costs by 29%. Due to the building closure and the preparation for construction, book and periodical purchases have been reduced. We also aren't using as many substitute hours and that kind of thing for the services that they're providing right now. FY 22 will be a year of construction and providing the library services in multiple ways, in multiple locations. One of the key priorities is how do we get residents to access the internet, computers, printers? Programming will continue virtually and in various physical locations. And we'll continue with the books to go and the book delivery. We may have other access to books depending on space availability. And the new library directory is to figure that out with you. So that's one of our big challenges, but it's also exciting. Next. The non-departmental. This is a section that includes charges that aren't directly tied to either departments or individuals. So we've got insurance, workers' comp and other insurance for the city together about $690,000. We have the special funds for a variety of programs. The, the largest of these is the supplement to state homeowner's property tax credit, which we traditionally budgeted about $150,000, $160,000. We have recently received the new calculations for requests for these services. And it comes to about $190,000 this year. So that's different than when we proposed this budget and prepared this budget. So we should, rather than the $150,000, $160,000 that we've been traditionally paying out, it's going to be closer to 190 this year. The additional 10,000 or any additional that we advocate for can be used. In my view, the best additional activity is a deferred property tax. And so that's something that I think doesn't cause any question related to the use of ARPA funds. I think others wouldn't either, but I, but that one's very clear. And it's something that certainly is seems doable and has been well received. So I don't know how much money that would add up to. But I think we can make an estimate of a certain amount and then work with that. The non-departmental account also includes the funds for grants and partnerships. We have grants programs that have been highly effective in recent, in the recent couple of years and we will continue those. The community partnership program also would be continued. And then we have housing fund expenditures. In this budget, we have about $210,000 identified for housing fund expenditures. These are traditionally in this category, not the largest. They tend to be the home stretch additions and that kind of thing. Next. And then the $300,000 for advancing council priorities is in the non-departmental budget. And those are items that I went through before. Next. So obviously we'll go very quickly through the priorities. You know your priorities. But the priorities really do help us make some tough discuss, tough decisions when we want to do it all. And I appreciate the work that the council did in identifying the priorities. And I appreciate this work that the staff did on matching the work that is needed with the priorities so that there's a good nexus. Next. So about the same thing. Next. So for implementing the priority on mitigate the impact of COVID-19 on the community and city operations. A lot of this budget is related to that. Particularly when it comes to technology and how we are arranging staffing. Much of this will come in the later discussions with the ARPA funds and how they can be used. Next. A deliverable community for all, many, many of the activities that are on our plate that we are doing fall into this category. And so we have race equity, we have the library, we have implementation of aspects of the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, the minor master plan, the, the work of reimagining the public safety task force, the work that they're doing, Vision Zero Goals, Rec Center. And again, the community grants and partnerships, arts and community events that help make this a friendly city as, as well as one where everyone feels included. Next. The, we, we skipped over this one during the capital budget discussion a little bit, but this is a really key budget item and, and council priority, and that's the fiscally sustainable government. We have to be very attentive to keeping a balance between the ongoing expenses and ongoing revenue. I, I would love to not worry about this so much, but it's really important. And it's particularly important given that you're going to a situation where you'll have this influx of funds. So it'll be a little confusing with the ARPA funds and you'll have a new city manager. As we talk in going through, we need to make sure that there's a, a consistent understanding of matching those ongoing expenses past December 2024 and the ongoing revenue that will be needed for that. Next. Many of the activities, I think we have funds for address environmental sustainable community. The climate emergency response framework is increasingly important. It increasingly hurts people that can't afford to be dealing with flooding in their homes or the heat costs or damage to their trees, infestations of their trees or just potentially the different kinds of viruses that may be coming from all of this. It's all something to be very concerned about. And it is part of the reason that I did put this $300,000 with which to work for the council to make some determinations about how to move through and make progress on our climate plans. Next. We do want an engaged, responsive and service-oriented government. We're looking at a variety of ways to really make our outreach more effective and our processing of internal forms and other kinds of things effective. I appreciated the interest of the council in our discussion of our technology needs. And that's something that will be really important for, it's, it's important today, but it'll be particularly important when we have even more money that we need to be getting to the right people, monitoring it carefully, reporting it back to the federal government. We need to have a very manageable, a transparent system for that. That will only come with better technology. Next. And we do need the community development for an improved and equitable quality of life. One of the things that we've seen with the pandemic is that largely people who had money did very well through the pandemic and those who didn't, didn't. And that division really needs to be addressed also by how we structurally are arranged in our community. This is a place where we can start to address that. We've started to make some improvements with affordable home purchase. We're looking at ways to improve workforce development. These are things that will help build strength within our community in all levels of our community going forward. It is a place where I'm hoping that the ARPA funds can make a lasting impact to bridge divide that shouldn't be there. And so we'll, we'll look and see how those can be used. But I appreciated in particular the work that has already been done. Particularly by Samira Samira for the, for workforce development strategic thinking. You know, how do we get people to be able to stand on their feet, build equity in their lives so that they participate better in our community? Next. And finally, there's, we've heard two budget reconciliation items so far. One staff, one I mentioned, which was an overcounting of my $58,000 in the capital budget regarding the commercial facade program. And then there was discussion, there was a $250,000 for a housing project in the capital budget. That, that was kind of a leftover in, as we moved some things around. And so it can either be kept there or it could, the funds could be added to the housing reserve or the funds could be used in a different way. But we don't have a specific use in mind at this moment. Next. And finally, for the end of this presentation, just a reminder that this, we've gone through now the operating budget. We had the public hearing next on Wednesday. Budget reconciliation on May 3rd. And then the two reading ordinances in the middle of May. And I think when we take down the power And I think why don't we take down the PowerPoint now? And I know we have our staff here to help answer questions and get into some of the discussions.
Great. Thank you so much for that presentation. I'm just pulling up all my stuff here. And I see Councilwoman Searcy has her hand up already. So why don't we start with her?
Great. Thank you. First, you also much for all of your hard work in putting together the budget. And I know this is, once again, I felt like we said it last year, this is a really weird year for budgeting. The ARPA funds are a blessing and a curse because it also creates another weird year for budgeting. So I know that it was mentioned that there was a little bit of a typo, I believe, in terms of the FTE counts. And I just want to make sure that I understand. I started going through the written version and I think there were some tweaks. So on what was, I believe, page I'm going through all of my Post-its. So can someone walk me through what the actual police department FTE count is? Because in the updated version of the summaries, the summaries table of the FTE, it looks as if the count is showing 64.68 is what's proposed. But on page, I believe, like 86, that's different. So I'm trying to understand kind of where, because I believe at one point it was showing that it was one full FTE increase, which I understand that shouldn't have been one on page eight. That should have been .01. Trying to make sure I understand is that those that correction made throughout the document. Oh, and I believe it's on page. I'm sorry, I have two versions open. So if you look at the version that's posted, page 24, and then you look at the police department line item of FTE, you're showing a proposed FY22 FTE count at 64.68. But then when you go to page 86, I believe, where you have the full police department summary pay summary count, you're showing the proposed FY22 is 67.68.
So that includes the three speed camera positions?
Okay, okay. And so on the other table, those other FTE were a separate line item.
That's right.
Okay, okay. And then, so the the other question I have is about the K-9 unit. So we're still proposing 5,700 for the K-9 allowance? And can you tell me what, I believe we still have one dog, correct?
That's right.
And that's for the supplies for that one animal?
Right, supplies and vet treatments and that kind of thing.
And so what would be the impact of a proposal to eliminate that?
Those numbers would go away. The recommendation from the chief is that that would be a discussion with the Public Safety Task Force and a recommendation that could come out of that. And it could either be removed soon and when that decision was made or it could, I believe the dog is nearing retirement age as it is, but it could just be phased out when the dog is no longer a part of the department.
Thank you. So I think that was the only thing. So the version of the tables that's on the web, those updated FTE counts are the version we should focus on, correct?
Is that right, Jessica?
That's correct. Yeah, the initial version, there was a typo in the fiscal 2021 column that has since been corrected. Those are the correct counts.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, as I'm waiting for people to put their hands up, I guess I can go next. Just staying on the police department for a second. I know there's been a lot of conversation on social media and other things, looking at the police department budget and people suggesting moving things around. I just, I'm looking for the page, but want to note that how much of the police department budget comes out of general funds? I think it's about, I just lost my place, $4 million, is that?
4.8.
Yeah, 4.8. So just if people, if somebody could find that, if you find that page, I just lost.
Page 87?
87. I think that's an important one for folks to look at as we're considering the police department budget to look at the breakdown. And actually, if there were any changes to make in moving around funds, it's that general fund line. So it's not $9 million, I guess. Yeah.
And the other component is that unless there's a change in the way tax duplication is dealt with, the only reason that we get money from the county for the police department is because we're a full-service department. So if we would start to cut back certain elements of our department, we may no longer be eligible for those funds.
Cool. All right. So that's just to say it's a little bit more complicated. Doesn't mean we can't discuss possible changes, but just want to point that out. That it's a bit more complicated than that.
Can you say a teeny bit more about that? Is it police or public safety? Is it officers or police functions generally? What exactly the reimbursement funds cover? Thank you.
I think there could be a little bit of discussion about that. The reason that we get tax duplication funds is because we're considered a full-service department. And that full-service department means that we function 24/7. So we have to have enough officers that can be in the various assignments to cover a 24/7 service, which takes a lot of officers because they have vacation or training or somebody gets hurt. And so you know, there's a certain amount that's just required just for ensuring that, say, we have four officers available overnight. The other aspects, you know, exactly what combination of services such as K-9 or other kinds of things could be debated. I don't think you have to have a K-9 unit to say that you're a full-service department. So that's where, that's one of those things where there may be certain services in the police department that don't trigger that as an issue. But certainly, it is the it is the number of patrol officers. And we also have investigations, which is part of us being full service. And so those would be the two units that would be particularly important.
But not, for example, parking or neighborhood services. Those would not affect, not that I'm suggesting anything about them other than they're not part of the reimbursement. That's my question.
That's my understanding. Yes.
Thank you.
Just so, since we have Andy here, anybody else have questions on the police department budget before we move on? Councilwoman Devalla?
Why don't you take someone else with them?
Councilmember Kovar, I see his name up on.
Yes, thank you and appreciate all the information provided by the staff. Just on the police, what wasn't clear to me was, I believe there was no change in the FTEs or significant change in the FTEs. What wasn't clear to me is whether there were at present some unfilled positions. So in other words, you can keep an FTE and the budget would not fill it or have it not be filled because someone leaves or whatever. So at the moment, are there unfilled positions? That's what I wanted to get a handle on.
No, there's no, there's no unfilled positions.
Both in officers and civilian?
There are some dispatch positions open.
Councilwoman Devalla, are you ready?
Thank you. Just needed to consult my list here. So two things that were mentioned briefly, one, the fringe benefits being a major reason for personnel increases. And if there's something more specific, what went up, what got in, that would be helpful. And then also, I think you said that overtime went down in this budget, but it looked to me like overtime went up. And there's really good reasons during a pandemic why overtime would change. But I would like to hear a little bit more about the police department's thinking on that topic in the short run, since in the long run, the chief is committed to lowering overtime as officers are added to pick up the work.
Right. So one of the things is which columns that you look at. And so the adopted budget had a lower overtime budget and then for FY21. But then the proposed goes back to more of the standard level. We did have quite a lot of overtime this year that was unexpected. And so part of it is just what you're comparing between FY21 and FY22. Mr. Powell, Deputy Chief, is there any other reasons on that overtime or do you know other information about that?
Yeah, so COVID affected a lot of our overtime for court purposes. So money we had allocated for court, we had to use for other aspects because we didn't have court. But then we had officers going out sick several at a time. We had to fill those positions to keep minimal manpower on the road. As we talked about, we are a full-service department and we're responsible to the community at all times. So we have to have proper staffing. We also had several incidents happen where we had dignitaries within the city that required extra protection. They came out of city overtime funds and things of that sort. So those were things that obviously we didn't expect, but we were able to draw from some of the court funds to pay for them.
Thank you.
And so for this year, you're assuming a little bit more of the same because we're not out of the pandemic?
I think that's safe to say.
I think we're trying, we're looking at about what's proposed here and we'll see.
And fringes?
I don't fully, we're really looking into the fringe discussion. I think some of it may have been when we had a vacant position or something. We didn't adequately have the fringes there from the last year and then it went up for this year. So we're really trying to parse that. And as soon as we have a little bit more information, we'll share that with you.
Thank you. And thank you for all that the police service does for us. Thank you so much.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
I was trying to find, and I couldn't, what are we budgeting this year for the police pension?
I don't think we're budgeting anything extra, just the standard amount. So the way that the police pension works and it's part of the reason that the personnel budget of the police department always looks high is because it's associated per person. So it shows up in the salary and fringes and the fringe benefits includes the pension amount per person.
Right.
We've had it in a separate category. It's been for an additional contribution to the pension fund and that's not put forward before you this year.
Thank you. Anyone else on police questions before we let Deputy Chief Powell off? C I Z, Councilwoman Kostick, and then Councilwoman Searcy.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for all of this information. I was looking at the old personnel lineup. So I probably just need to spend some time looking at that with the new one. But I was just, I had some questions about, it looked like there were some shifts from operations to criminal investigations and the position shifting back and forth. And I'm not sure if that's changed in the newer schedule or not, but I just wondered if you could speak to that a little bit.
Well, Ms. Clark, would you answer that? I know you've got the answers.
Yeah, so that hasn't changed. There were two investigative positions that were moved to operations when the police department temporarily suspended their special assignment team, their plainclothes team, and so they're moved back to criminal investigations. So that hasn't changed.
So is that more or less going back to sort of a status quo of what it was before? Is that what you're saying?
I have to ask Andy to speak to why they were moved further.
We had our SAT team somewhat dismantled for a short period of time and we were trying to fill the positions. So we moved them to other places in the department. We've now been able to reconcile the team that is open and operating now within the city. And that's why the positions are back.
So we can have the chief also speak to that, kind of some of the, perhaps at another time.
Yeah, I think it'd be useful to get some more information.
Same size?
And does that have any implications in terms of budgetary impacts? Or is that just sort of a shifting of positions?
It's just a shift. It's just, right.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I guess, you know, just looking at the budget. And I know the timing is very frustrating with regard to when we're getting the recommendations from the task force. You know, I know we've been talking about looking at how we want to reimagine public safety for a while. And now, you know, we're adopting the budget before we have those recommendations, which I think is a really difficult timing structure. So I'm curious if there has been any discussion within the task force or in the making of the budget in terms of what, you know, what your alternative thinking is or where some of these other shifts might be happening. And I think you raised a good point, City Manager Letho, about the rebates from the county. And I wonder if that's something that has been looked into in terms of the the public safety bucket of money versus a police bucket of money and what the implications of that are.
I think it's a really good question. But let me speak to it in two different ways. The first, to answer the kind of the first part of your question, I know the chief is looking at trying to get mental health professionals assigned to Tacoma Park. There's been a couple of different ways that we have looked at doing that. One is a partnership with Montgomery County, which is expanding its mental health unit. And we would love to have them assigned, have a couple of them assigned with Tacoma Park. And so there have been discussions about that. The other thing is that the ARPA funds have quite a lot of provisions for mental health services. Not so much in the local government elements, but in other aspects of that law. And so there are efforts being made at the state level and at the county level to take advantage of those services. And so we would really want to partner for that. If not, I think, you know, I really don't think we will need to have, use our general fund funds to do that. But I think there's every desire to do that because that kind of partnership helps our whole public safety efforts. It's something the police department wants. It's something all of us want. The other thing that will be interesting, and this goes to the tax duplication element, is that the formula that was devised to reimburse Tacoma Park for police services was developed, was out of date in the year 2000. Policing and public safety is so different now. And in my view, mental health services are part of public safety. And I think there could be a very strong discussion in going into the new discussions with the county on how to do a formula for policing services that really should address that because the county is using it for mental health. They want to use, they want mental health assistance with their police department. We certainly want it for our police and housing and other units in our city. And to me, that is part of public safety. I think a very strong argument could be made that that should be part of the rebate calculation. So really looking forward to building that in as a better way of doing policing. The old version of policing that was already out of date in 2000 was a calls for service model. You know, oh, there's an accident. It takes two officers X number of hours to respond to an accident if it's like this. Or if it's like, that is not how public safety should be. It should be, first of all, preventing accidents. Second of all, you know, how do we, how do we work together to have a more healthy community? And so that's what a really good formula should be representing. And so, that's what a really good formula should be representing. So, I think there's opportunities in both getting mental health assistance without it coming from our general fund and building that part as part of a really appropriate formula for our services.
Councilwoman Circe?
Thank you, City Manager and Councilmember Kostic. So, I do want to raise questions and I do want to raise one point about the public safety task force. One, the public safety task force should not prevent members of council from doing and making recommendations on the budget that is before us that we think is important to make. One of the things that I have asked the task force to really focus on is identifying those high-level programmatic priorities or recommendations that they have on things and models that we should try to adopt, but to not spend all their time trying to piece apart every single line item in our budget to try to figure out how to fund them. Though, that's our job as council. So, if there are certain aspects of the budget that is before us right now that we have questions about, that we would like to see addressed, we, I just want to say, we don't have to wait for the task force to make a recommendation for us to address it. That's something that we can do now to try to make sure that there are, there's a clear understanding of the task, with the task force on the complexities. As City Manager Ledlow has mentioned, there's a lot of complexities in terms of how we are reimbursed for specific services, which makes trying to figure out how to move people around very difficult and they have a short amount of time. So, the city manager will be presenting to the task force and walking them through the budget. We're also talking internally because I do believe that the task force is interested in speaking with members of the council. The mayor and myself have had an opportunity to talk to the task force, but they would like to hear from you all as well. So, again, if there are specific areas that are important to you all, definitely we can, we can figure out what's the right approach for any space-time that the council could have with the task force to help inform their recommendations. But I do want to stress that point. I don't, I don't want us to necessarily use the task force as a shield from doing what we know we need to do now. We could just do it where the council, we could do that. The question I have, so, I'm trying to understand things like the employee recognition line item.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like it's increased a lot and I'm just trying to, but it's a little difficult for me to see between, you know, the adopted versus, you know, the prior year actuals. It's kind of, this particular line item was all over the place.
Okay, Councilmember Circe, it's always a very confusing line item in every of the departments. It is associated with individual people. So, if somebody gets to a certain five-year mark or 10-year mark, there's a certain cash amount that goes with that. So, if you have several people at once getting it, it can be higher. And if you don't have people that year, it goes lower. And so, you'll see that if you look at each department budget, sometimes it's bounced up or sometimes it's bounced down. And it's because it's associated with an individual in that department. Not, it's, there's not like a certain line that we look, how much did we spend last year? And are we keeping it the same or that kind of thing? It doesn't go like that.
Thank you. That's helpful. And so, we, it's our proposal who might be coming up for eligibility on those types of things. Okay. And then Deputy Chief, about recruitment and like confidence in trainings and things. I know that we have been kind of limited in some respects because of the pandemic. But what are you all proposing? Any additional trainings or new trainings? Or is this a continuation of your prior schedule for trainings in terms of the anticipated costs? And also, you know, are you having difficulties with recruitment and need additional resources? Are these like bonuses? Like, how are you, how are these line items working together, if that makes sense at all?
Yeah, so what we're hoping is that as COVID restrictions start to relax, we can start sending some of our members to some of these specialty schools again, as well as organizational trips, team building and things like that, especially for upper management, so we can lead the department better. We're always looking for training. So, we're hoping to have the training budget back to where it was so we can get people trained and up-to-date on all best practices. As far as recruitment, we're full-staffed right now. The only thing that we are still going through the process for is dispatchers. That was some of the reasons, I think, in Ms. Kostic's question earlier when she asked about the shifting of the SAT position is simply when I first got here in 2019, we were down positions. Patrol was the backbone of any organization, so that takes a priority. So, those positions in SAT were repositioned to patrol. And then when we filled the positions, so we had enough people, we then put people back and investigators back into the SAT positions. So, as far as recruitment, we're doing pretty good right now and comparable to other agencies, especially the fact that we are, again, full-staffed.
But you keep, so one of the other aspects, and this is something obviously that also has been discussed with, to some extent, with the task force, we do a lot of training. We do, we do more than required amount of training because we're really trying to make sure that we handle all of the public safety aspects in this better way that meet the criteria of real 21st century policing. And so, it is, it is a larger training budget. Nevertheless, there's, the police department will still be doing remote training and conferences for a while until it's, until it's available, it's safe to be able to go to some of those. It's still less than it normally is.
And the, and the $20,000 for recruitment, is that just something you all typically have as staff turnover? Or because it looks?
That's right. We have to keep, we have to make sure that we're really doing the background work correctly. And we also work really hard to make sure that the diversity of our police department is reflective of our community. So, we take extra steps to do outreach. And so, that's respected, that's reflected in that expense. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Was that it for the police department? Great. Great. Thank you, Deputy Chief, for answering all those questions. Great. I think we'll go back to general questions on the operating budget. And I see Councilmember Kovar's hand is up.
Yes, thank you. And I don't mean to confuse what you just asked, but I have one additional observation about the police department before I go to a couple of other things. It's not really a question for sale, although of course it can be answered. My concern is that, and maybe this is addressed partly by what Councilmember Circe was, was saying. And perhaps I may not have fully grasped her point. But one of the things I'm concerned about is that we do have in this proposed budget a significant increase in the amount, 7% or 7.01 or whatever the amount is. And we have the task force. And so, if I understood Councilmember Circe correctly, there's nothing to stop us from proposing changes now. I could propose that we get rid of the K9 program, for example. But the reality is, if I understand the timing correctly, that we're going to be voting in a few weeks on more or less the final budget. ARPA still to come afterwards. So, we're going to have to get back to that over the course of the fiscal year. But we're really not going to have the full recommendations of the task force by the May 19 file, although we'll probably have them before the start of the fiscal year. And so, I think what I'm concerned about is if they make some recommendations that would potentially cost money and there are things that aren't covered by ARPA. Maybe the mental health piece can be, I don't know. It strikes me that we should think about not committing the full amount of the police budget now pending our hearing from the task force.
Councilmember Kovar, I think there's two things. One is, it's very, other than perhaps the K9 and a couple of small things, it's very difficult to cut the existing police department budget without cutting staff. The, I think there's a couple of opportunities that you have. One is the $300,000 for council goals, which public safety task force elements could be taken from that. And you could say, we want to devote $50,000 or some other amount to help make up that difference. You can do a budget amendment at any point in the year to cut or change those things around. The other thing that you can do, and it doesn't necessarily have to be in the budget action itself, but you can make some decisions about what happens going forward. If vacancies happen or if this happens or, you know, if the dog is no longer needed or those kinds of things. So, it may not have a money item in this budget, but you could have a policy or a direction that you want to give to, as X happens, then you do Y. So, I think there's a couple of options that you have. Obviously, as Councilmember Circe said, you're doing a budget. It's the council decision about reconciliation on this budget. But you also can put some stuff, some money aside. You do have unassigned reserves for things that happen. And you have the opportunity to make policy plans that can be part of a resolution or an ordinance.
Well, I would just say, we're not going to decide this, this evening. And our commitment was to reimagine. We didn't specifically say what type of funding changes we might make. But I, I think for me, I didn't anticipate a significant increase in the police budget. And to have that happen during the period when the task force's work is pending just doesn't feel exactly like where we want to be to me. And so, I'm, I'm not going to push the point further now, but I think we ought to have is something that's at least on the table, thinking about ways of holding off on some of the expenditures pending us hearing more from the task force. So, I'll just, I'll just mention that. I don't know, Mayor, if we're just open now in terms of whatever other topics we want to talk about. I had a few other thoughts.
Yeah, no, I just thought, because the, it seemed like we had police questions that we didn't, so.
But if you don't object, I had a few other
Yep.
separate things. So, and I appreciate that. And one important one, people know, because I mentioned this a lot, is this question of the stormwater that affects private property and so on. And I understand and I appreciate that the city manager has mentioned one possibility is, is to come out of that $300,000. I think it's, personally, I think it's likely that we will be able to use the ARPA funds. But I understand we don't, we don't know the answer to that. I see, it's right, it has popped up again too. So, my hope would be that we'll do that out of ARPA. And so, then we wouldn't have to use it from the $300,000. If, on the other hand, we get the word on ARPA that we can't, then I would like to have a $300,000. And that's another thing where I'm not sure exactly when we're going to know the answer to that. So, I feel like there's ARPA generally, that one specifically, the task force. A number of these things, I just am worried about how they'll unfold since we may not have the official, or the, not the official, but the final word by the 19th. So, that to me would be one of those that I think we should try to do. And then just to mention a few other things, from my perspective, we talked about the, in the capital expenditure, expenditures session last week, we talked about the street sweeper. And I understand it's an important component of what we're doing on stormwater and also keeping the city looking good. It is a tough thing to sort of absorb that the amount we're talking about for this one piece of equipment is half would come from, would come from the budget as proposed, half would come from the reserve set aside for vehicles. So, it's not literally $500,000 in new spending, but it's at least $250,000 in new spending. And unless some of that is coming from stormwater, but that's the amount that represents the difference between constant yield and the proposed tax increase. And given that there was some uncertainty about the new technology on the electric vehicles, that's when I would want to have us look at in reconciliation. And I'm not, I don't want, I think people need to argue, you know, against that right now. I'm just flagging that as one.
Councilmember Kovar, if I could just ask a very quick clarifying question, would you be looking at putting half of the cost on reconciliation because we could not do electric? Or would you?
I think to be determined, I'm submitting some written questions about a number of things and I'll include that in there. This is more just a flag. I don't want to monopolize this and expect everybody to answer my questions when they haven't had a chance to really hear it. So, I'll just mention a couple of things really quickly. I do think the answer to $250,000 that was mentioned for housing, when we're also putting over $200,000 separately into the housing reserve seems unnecessary to me. So, that's one that I would flag. And two other things I had mentioned, if we're going to be doing all this construction on the library and kind of in the area around the community center, I'd lean toward holding off. And I know it's a point, but holding off on the atrium piece for this budget. And then I would like to see us take some action on climate change. And that includes trees, the tree planting pile. We've talked about some tree outreach work and some of the other climate change ideas that we've talked about. And I'll defer to, in particular, Councilmember DeBala, who has some, I think may have some thoughts about ARPA funds being, being available for some of the building work and so on. But I would certainly be interested and open to that. And then the last thing I'll just mention is some of the public works purchases that are in tier three, which means not desperately urgent, not kind of got to have it, meritorious, but maybe not at the top, at the top of the list. I'd be looking at whether some of those could be held off too as a way of keeping spending more, a little bit more at a lower level. So, I'll stop there and submit my other questions in writing and ask for clarifications on the ones I just meant. But in terms of, I just mentioned, but in terms of some initial flags on potential reconciliation, those are some of my thoughts. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar, can I just ask a clarifying question? For the, for reconciliation for the housing reserve fund, did you want to put the 250 or the 210 on, to take out of the housing reserve fund?
Well, I was thinking we were putting in the 210, which is similar to the amounts we've had before. And it seemed, and I may have misunderstood the city manager on this, in which case I apologize, but it seemed as if the 250 might have been a, I don't want to say extra, but sort of duplicative. I would say if the idea is to be able to be nimble to respond quickly when an opportunity arises, as we did with Garland Road.
And I just want to know if the 250 or the 210 amount on the reconciliation?
250.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to, that's all. We'll talk, we can talk about it next week. I just wanted to make sure when I'm going over this with the deputy city manager that we had the, the correct thing for the chart. Because we'll go, we're, we can work on this a little bit more on Wednesday as well.
Yeah, and as I said, I'll explain these things better in written form. That was just to kind of get it out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Smith?
First, I would like to ask staff if you considered hiring a consultant for additional communication support rather than having to bring on another FTE?
No, we have not considered that. It certainly is a possibility. I think it's, it's likely to be more expensive. But it is something that perhaps if there's a targeted purpose could be done. The activities that are in this department are massive. And so, we do need to have somebody that would be, become familiar with city operations and be very comfortable working with various departments and their websites and their needs for their various activities. So, it is something that's different than just a one-time activity.
Well, I would like the council to be able to compare. I mean, you know, once we hire employees, they stay here for a long time. And you have, might seem like it's more expensive upfront, but it probably is going to cost the city more money in the long term. On the discretionary proposals, I'll just say now upfront that I don't support a racial equity officer. I don't think that's a necessary expenditure. And I do support money for stormwater management on private property. And I would like to see that amount go to $200,000 rather than the 150 that it initially started at the proposal. And that's what I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Councilman Kostic?
Thank you. I still have a couple of questions before we get into reconciliation stuff. But I do want to just associate myself with some of the comments that Councilmember Kovar made about the concerns with the police budget. I had a question about the housing amounts that we were talking about, the 250 and the 210. So, is, am I understanding correctly that it wasn't literally a duplication? But it was that if there were a housing project, the anticipation would be that that would come from the housing reserve instead of from this other line item? Or were there actually two, is there still a 250 somewhere or some other budget for housing? Or were there actually two? Is there still a two hundred and fifty somewhere or some other budget for a housing project?
There's two hundred, there's an additional two hundred fifty thousand dollars identified in the capital budget. That was not considered to be a contribution to the housing reserve or an expenditure from the housing reserve. It was, in some respects, it was kind of. A placeholder for something that might be more. Part of a larger complex that was commercial and housing. That's not in front of you at this time. There's not something imagined for you at this time. And so. As we made some changes, it was left there. I didn't want to take it out when this came to you because I it also is such an important. Aspect of housing and economic development. Strategic plan to to have some funds available if something comes up. So I left it in there, but it's more for you to decide how you want to handle those funds.
Thank you. I also wonder if you could just elaborate a little bit more on the ARPA distribution. I guess I I don't know if I'm just completely missing something. And I haven't had a chance to go through the budget as much as I normally would like to so far. But so we're talking about the one point two million from the ARPA here. But we're anticipating getting quite a bit more this year. Is that correct? And and why? Why are we just looking at the one point two, I guess I'm wondering? And I know we don't have some of the information on the other stuff, but just wondering why that specific number.
So so what we've done is gone through and and looking at the rules that we do have for ARPA. There were some fairly specific. Rules about how to. How municipalities can reimburse themselves for lost revenue due to the pandemic. And the very clear direction was that. You compare basically a line item revenue source. To the last full. Revenue line from before the pandemic started. So we looked at the. Revenues from FY nineteen. And we compared that to what we're receiving for FY twenty and for FY twenty one and projected for FY twenty two. And there were several line items that were clearly distinct, such as the amounts for recreation payments for classes. And so we were able to identify that we didn't spend. You know, we didn't get in money for rec classes in FY twenty one essentially. And so because that's very clear when we compare to the audited versions for FY nineteen. We have a good estimate that can meet the criteria for ARPA. We felt that also for a couple of other categories. Including some bank charges and some other revenue categories. So we were very clear about that. We were very conservative. We anticipate that there will be more. But we did not want to take a chance on that and then find out something wasn't provable. So we were very conservative about what we could, what we read. The only other categories besides revenue replenishment that we are identifying is from ARPA funds. Are one hundred thousand dollars for document management software, which will. Is essential for our operations, but it's even more essential when we get down to doing the kind of contracts and other things that will be likely to be dealt with. When these funds come in. And then we had eight thousand dollars that we were anticipating. Small businesses would put towards a facade program that we feel would be one of the kinds of things that we would be able to use. In in helping small businesses that affected by the pandemic. So we identified those. There's another six million bucks that would be likely in the first tranche of the of the ARPA funds. For FY twenty two. And we're waiting for the Treasury Department to issue the parameters on on how these funds can be used. The information that we've heard so far is that there, you know, that information may not come out till. May, when the monies go out to the states and the larger municipalities. And then the monies for Tacoma Park would come within about thirty days after that. So we'll have some information, but it's not likely to be before. Certainly not before next Monday and and maybe not before you vote on the final budget.
Thank you. That's really helpful. So then with regard to the unassigned reserve and the the amount, we're looking at the two point eight million versus the the four point six six. That we would have if we were putting in the seventeen percent. I guess I'm just looking ahead and thinking, you know, we do have the offset. With the ARPA funds and that is for use in an emergency. So I think that makes a lot of sense. But just in terms of kind of those ongoing expenses and what we're setting ourselves up for. With ongoing expenses, looking forward when we don't have the ARPA funds and we do need to fund our own emergency bucket. How how is that looking? What's your your sense of of how that sets us up to be able to handle that?
Thank you. I mean, that was that was something that I put in my transmittal message to you in the budget. I'm looking at three different pieces of information. One is that, first of all. Maybe we'll be successful that we can align tax duplication to increasing costs. I mean, so that's one aspect that we push, especially if we're getting a tax duplication for public safety that's largely personnel. It would be something that would more or less keep up with those kinds of costs that do increase for health insurance and wages in the region. A more substantial element, I think, is how do we really improve our commercial tax base? What is it that we can do both to with ARPA funds? That really helps build strength within our commercial sector? And if that's done, then that can start picking up a larger proportion of the tax base. And it reduces the amount of impact for our single family property owners. And. That's something that looks like. Really has an opportunity with these ARPA funds and with some of the investments that can be done with the ARPA funds. I'm looking forward to those descriptions from the Treasury Department, but I am very hopeful of for that. The third area that ARPA funds can really be useful for and and ours, you know, even if we don't get ARPA funds for this purpose, although it looks very much in line. Is workforce development. How do we help our residents to earn more money? Be in a better position to run their own business? Be in a better position to have the training or the credentials that are needed? To be able to work in our community, to stay, to to. They can pay more income tax, they can receive less. Assistance from us in in dealing with rents or other kinds of needs. So what is it that we can do that kind of helps raise that? That level of capacity among our residents? And I think that those are really key things that we have an opportunity to make a difference. The hard answer is that you raise taxes, right? So this not raise the tax rate and raise taxes. Part of the goal here is to not have to do that, to be have the increased and ongoing revenue source that's needed. But that that's always a fallback. And I and I working really hard to try to not have that be the answer. To me, it's much better to be targeted about how we build that tax base. And how do we build the systems within our commercial sector and our workforce? So that we have a more sustainable economy in Tacoma Park. So that's what I'm looking at.
Thank you. And then I just have one more sort of, this is a more specific, I think, public works question. And I understand there might not be an easy answer to this. But just looking at the the street sweeper, the electric street sweeper that I know is significantly more expensive than. A traditional one. Is there any way to sort of measure? The impact of those fun of those funds towards GHG reductions and climate change impacts? If we dedicate those funds to the street sweeper versus use them in some other way? Is there something else we could do potentially with that same amount of money that would actually have a better net benefit for us? I guess is what I'm wondering.
Yeah, I think that.
Oh, you you muted yourself.
Sorry. I think that's a great question. We have not run the figures yet. We're still, in fact, just today, we had another EV sweeper company come in to show us a demo equipment. So we're still gathering information and pricing. What we can do is kind of a back of the envelope calculation on reduction in fuel costs and maintenance costs over the ten year expected life of the sweeper. What we did learn today is that with the current new technology, the sweepers have a battery life of five years. At which point the battery may need to be changed out and the current cost is fifty thousand dollars. So there may be some additional costs or maintenance that we'll need to factor in. So we're still kind of gathering information. About the implications of that. The other thing is it's also a little bit of a moving target. The diesel engines, we currently run on diesel. The diesel engines of ten years ago are far different from the current diesel engine. So there's reductions in emissions there. So we're gonna have to do a little bit of. Homework to figure out how to calculate the greenhouse gas emissions potential from reduced fuel use. Reduced maintenance costs and see what the rate of return would be in terms of the ten year life of the equipment. My hunch is that it, I don't think it'll quite break even. But again, we have not done the hard work of making those comparisons. So we can focus on that this week and try to give you the best estimate we have in terms of what that might look like. I also just learned today that there may be a hybrid option, a diesel hybrid vehicle. So that would be sort of a middle middle point between the two. We don't yet have cost proposals for that. But there, you know, there's just, this is really new technology coming through. And there's a lot of lot of interest and companies are clamoring to try to fill that, fill that need. We are also will be looking at grant programs. Timing is really critical with the grant programs. There's one grant program that happens in spring, another in the fall. We just learned that there may be MEA, Maryland Energy Administration. Grant funding available, so we still have quite a bit of work to do to line up. Timing if it's a if it's a purchase timing issue. That wreaks some havoc because we really are in need of a replacement as soon as possible. Our current sweeper is really on its last legs. So we wouldn't want to push out till spring if that's the next grant funding cycle. So there is a quite a bit few moving parts as we contemplate this this choice. But we'll do our best to try to run those numbers and comparisons for you and get that information as quickly as we can.
Thank you. That would be great. And thank you so much for considering this. I think it's really great. They were looking at this as an option and considering the the benefits it would have. And if there's any way also as you're going through to look. Like I said, not just maybe at the direct purchase of this with those additional funds. But you know, if those funds were used for something else. Related to sustainability, could that have an actual bigger impact potentially? I'd be really interested to see what what how that would play out.
So just to just to note that if if, for example, some of those funds were not needed in the stormwater budget, there certainly are at least two stormwater projects that we'd be ready to move forward on.
Yes, and my last comment is related to stormwater, which is that I I also am interested in utilizing some funds for. Stormwater management and particularly the issues on private property that we're seeing and helping alleviate some of that. So I think that's it for now. Thank you very much.
Great. Councilmember Minavala, back to you.
Thank you. Yes, I was also interested in in the question that councilmember Kostic brought up. If if you take that additional money to go to the electric sweeper and instead use it for other kinds of climate. Reduction programs. Climate impact, climate mitigation programs with with how would that play out? It just as an estimate.
Yeah, we have several options currently built into that. Three hundred thousand dollar fund option that the city manager Leto had 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 listed. Included in that is potential additional funding for the tree canopy implementation pilot program, I think thirty six thousand dollars. The some additional sustainability climate action work is in there. I can't remember the level of that. Suzie, do you recall?
I think it's I think it's not.
Yep. And then, you know, the the stormwater potential for stormwater with the one hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. Or whatever the council wants to put into it. The one thing I would say in regard to that particular aspect. Once we establish that program, that will be ongoing. So that's not something that we'll be able to do one year and then not again. My my sense is that the program will start out with sort of a evaluation process of identifying those areas where they're they're having these kinds of issues. And create creating some kind of rating system to determine. Which ones get in the queue first and then the design development for those processes. I anticipate that in moving forward on that, we'll have some areas that are more readily able to move from. Community discussion to design to actual implementation based on. Interest of the private property owners involved. We'll have to get construction easements and right away easements, which can oftentimes be problematic. And as we've seen in a number of projects, can bring things to a halt if there's not. Individual property owners' willingness to sign those types of easement agreement. So there could be a lot of factors in that. But you know, once we start those that that program, that's an ongoing program that basically will will. Depending on how we want to fund it, either through general fund or stormwater funds will be, you know, roll into the future. For, you know, for the foreseeable future.
That's a good point that it's not a one year project. So I have a lot, I have, I submitted a a list of of questions that are more specific to individual line items. So I'm not going to go through all that for the different operating budgets. But I had several areas that I wanted to address while we have the whole council online. And starting, I wasn't going to start with public works, but well. Starting with, there've been several references to the three hundred thousand dollars, which I understand is a placeholder. But even the ones that you've identified add up to more than three hundred and you've mentioned a few more. It would be helpful to have. Since you have targeted, since you have identified. A number of things in passing, it would be helpful to have a more complete breakout of that. And one of the reasons I say that is it would also be helpful. Understanding that right now we're keeping the ARPA money separate because we don't know what to use, what we can use it for. But it would be helpful to have that wish list, waiting list of ARPA funds, ARPA projects that are potential. That you have been thinking about as a as a staff. So back to public works. A couple of priority areas that I that I just wanted to ask about. Last year, we had money set on hold for a tree canopy plan that was mentioned in the resolution. In addition to the pilot tree planting program. So what are your thoughts now about meeting the intent of the resolution? Either with contract money or with staff now that now that we have an excellent arborist on staff? How you how I did, that wasn't clear to me from the write up of the urban forest program. Similar question with the climate program. I hear, I see the slide, I hear the the ideas. When I look at the. Dollars, it it doesn't, it they go, they appear to go down. So I'd just like to get Darrell, your thoughts on those two programs because you are so very creative. With getting with, you know, with getting a lot done with not a lot of money, but I would like to hear what you have to say.
Sure. Well, for the tree canopy work, the budget document that you have includes basically maintenance of existing programs. What we were asked to do was submit additional program. Add ons that are that are reflected in that supplemental budget amount. So the other thing that we intended to do is have the urban forest manager do a presentation. First was, I think, in the resolution, it listed the date of March that wasn't able to happen. So I think now it's scheduled in early May for him to sort of. So I think now it's scheduled in early May for him to sort of, his intention is not to come with a fully baked, fully blown project with all the details. He's been working up concepts. So he, the intention is for him to have a discussion with council about where he, how he interprets the tree canopy resolution, what he thinks is reasonable to do and kind of his main initial program focus, should additional funding become available, how he would roll out a pilot program. And, and critical to that will be additional staff time. So there's nothing that can be done currently without an additional intern. And I think that's part of the 36,000 that's in that category of additional funding.
So there is also an intern in there already, right?
Yeah, which is a consistent, we have an intern in the Urban Forest Manager's budget. Typically, last few years, we've included that in the budget. So that intern would be basically, the existing one in the existing budget or proposed budget would be to do, to manage some of the programs that we would intend for them to do, provide assistance to the Urban Forest Manager on tree inspections in the heavy, heavy months when tree, tree applications come in at a pretty high clip. And then also to work with the documentation of the replanting agreements. So to follow up and make sure those replanting agreements are taking place. So that typically is what we envision for the intern. The additional intern money and pilot program money that are not included in the base budget for next year that you have in front of you would be to roll out the tree canopy goals as, as we interpret them based on the resolution. So we can have more of that conversation in May when Marty comes before you and kind of rolls out, lays out what his thoughts are. And then, you know, we very much want to get your feedback and comments to see if he's captured what you were expecting or if not, why not? And then you'll have a decision to make as to whether or not to include additional funds in the budget to, you know, head towards that pilot program that he will be developing. On the sustainability programs, a couple of things that I want to say because it gets a little complicated. In FY '21, the initial budget was at a certain level, but because we didn't spend funds from FY '20, we rolled a lot of those particularly rebate-related funds into FY '20. And again, this was pre-pandemic. So we were assuming we'd be, you know, full steam ahead and able to make those rebate programs and other types of programs and community outreach available. So some of the, some of the dollars that we have in '21 were actually dollars unspent in '20 that moved into '21. So part of what you see in the comparison to '21 and '22 is an assumption at this point about what we're going to be able to spend in FY '21 of those rebate monies and then what we think we can get done in FY '22. I will say, based on a meeting I had with Gina Mathias today, she thinks she will fully be able to spend this year's rebate budget for the multifamily and commercial accounts. So that's really exciting because that is not, not, that is not a, a mark we've hit before. So she's had a high number of applications and been able to sign, get signed agreements for energy efficiency work. So we can provide a little more detail for that upcoming if the council's interested. But for those two pots of money, we think we'll be able to fully spend, spend this year's, this year's budget.
There was, so there won't be that kind of rollover that there was?
There won't be that kind of rollover for those particular funds. There may be for some others. But then relative to new programs or additional programs, again, we were asked to provide, you know, kind of new programmatic ideas in a separate category from our maintenance of operations budget. So Gina did provide those and, and that is included, my understanding, in the possibility for the, that additional $300,000. And I can get the details. So I, I think they're, I think they're reflected in a budget document somewhere. But if not, I could certainly identify those numbers so you can have those in front of you.
Great, thank you. Can I keep going or do I need to get somebody else to turn for a minute? On, on the overall budgeting and particularly for recreation, can the city manager just say what were the assumptions about reopening? To say it again, in the context of there's some, because there's all these different, appear to be all these different department assumptions about special events, conferences and training, who's going where, when, who's opening up, who's not opening up? And it wasn't possible for me to, to really track the, track what the assumptions were. And yes, of course, each department, it will affect each department differently. But I, I'd just like to hear that, hear that again, if you don't mind.
Sure, I can speak to it and also both Greg Clark and Debbie are available. The, right now, we are starting to offer before and after care. We are planning for some, for the summer camps. But Mr. Clark, why don't you go ahead and, and talk for a moment about kind of what your assumption is over the course of the year, both for training and for activities?
Yes, starting in July, actually June, we are, we'll, we'll be preparing for summer camp to receive the kids back. And of course, with summer camp starting, there are new ratios and things of like that that we have to make sure that we adhere to because of the pandemic. So we may have additional staffing where we normally wouldn't have as many staff. Of course, with that, we'll be taking less kids, we'll keep the kids in pods and things like that. But we'll, we expect to just have summer camp this summer in the building. We will have a few in-person classes that are starting soon and will continue into the summer. And we'll also continue our online activities. We, in the fall, we anticipate having childcare, before care and after care in the facility. We also expect to have outside in-person classes as well as online options as well. We do not anticipate going back fully into the building until January. And that's what we put in our, those budget numbers reflect that. So, you know, there's no front desk staff and things of that nature. The staffing that's there will be there for childcare needs and to manage classes and things of that nature.
So part of that is that obviously the Recreation Department staffs the building. They staff the front desk and that kind of thing. So we'll be having limited access, starting in September, more general opening by January. Also, Mr. Clark didn't mention it, but they've been doing extra training with their staff so that they know how to meet all the pandemic requirements, how to work with staff, with the parents differently, how to function if there's an outbreak within a pod, the whole, all of the different iterations about how do you work with this? So they've actually had more training than they normally do. The other aspect too is just, I think, as with other departments, in-person conferences is later. So did I cover that correctly?
Yes, yes, that, that was actually correct. And we, we send our staff to, a plan to send our staff to various train, trainings as well coming up on, you know, re-entering and, you know, having programs and things of that nature. As, as they come up and they see fit, there are special trainings on dealing with summer camp kids and, you know, in COVID and having in-person camp. So, you know, as they, those types of things come up, we send our staff to them so that we can get all the latest information and make sure that we're, you know, operating in a safe manner.
Okay, thank you. And that just occurs to me that some of that may be ARPA eligible because it's things you wouldn't normally be doing, like.
Correct. We certainly have been and, and besides. Correct. And besides ARPA, FEMA reimbursements for anything pandemic-related are continuing. So we're also continuing to submit our FEMA requests for all of the different pieces of equipment and that kind of training that would fit into that category.
So just two more things. I thought I heard you say that, I'm, I'm switching back to the housing. So I thought I heard you say that homestretch and some of these other things are somewhere in one of the line items. I'm still, so there's a, there's the 250 in the capital budget. There's the 210 to contribute, correct me if I'm wrong, the 210 to contribute to the housing reserve. And then there's other housing-related program money, right? And maybe.
But there's a, there's a 229 and a 210. And I think.
Okay, 229 then the 210. Okay, go ahead.
And probably going to speak to the wrong one, just one moment.
Or me, or maybe this is something you would like to take a, a little bit of time.
So the two, so the 210 is the expenditure, expend, expected expenditure that would include homestretch and those kinds of programs. The 229 is the anticipated contribution of the city to the housing reserve. And the 29,000 of that is from the Junction Project, which the amount that they pay goes to the housing reserve.
Okay, and then the 250 is in the capital budget. Okay.
Correct.
And I thought, I wrote down that I had another question on the non-departmental budget, but maybe I don't. Maybe somebody else could. We're just kidding. Oh, here it is. So if I'm correct, in the Community Partners Fund, you are essentially consolidating a couple of programs we had before and then adding a teeny bit more.
I'm not sure the, I'd have to look again at those.
All right, well then that's, that's.
I can get back to that.
I have to do it now. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And then there are a couple of other, but we don't, we don't need to answer them right now that I had about the specifics of the numbers. Well, thank you very much and thank you, Greg, for all the recreation work your staff is doing because it's been a year and, and you all are putting some really good stuff forward for recovery. Thank you.
And, and just to note.
All the others. I don't mean to anybody, leave anybody out. I've just been.
No, the, Greg, the Recreation Department has been awesome through this. I, they really have stepped up and it's, it is wonderful. To the point about any questions, any council questions that you have on details that you've not yet submitted, please submit it to Jessica. She's got a running list of the answers. They'll be coming out to you tonight or tomorrow. She's been working on that. So. Jessica, did you want to mention anything about it?
Nope, that's it. First round done, ready for the second round.
Great. All right. So I'm turning over to Councilwoman Circe.
Thank you. Um, so one question I have about the ARPA funds as it relates to how we budget. And I'm trying to make sure I understand the lowering of taxes versus the receipt of the funds and how all of that works. And so I've been trying to read and I probably just don't get it. So I know the NLC is saying that that requirement is only limited to states and that these, or at least what I'm looking at right now, can lower taxes. But I've read other places that that's not the case. And I don't know if everybody's just trying to, different lawyers are reading different things in, in, in the. And so I don't know what is the more appropriate approach for us to take. Meaning if we can, if, if we want to take a more conservative approach until more guidance is issued, then we perhaps should not automatically take things out of our budget in the expectation of paying for them using ARPA funds in order to lower the tax rate, rate, right? Because, one, we don't know if those things will be covered. Two, we may be held to the law that prevents us from doing such a thing. So have you all, has staff started to think about how to, what guidance we're leaning towards trying to follow in terms of that nuance for ARPA? Because I, I, I'm still new to the game. I'm still trying to read stuff. And it seems like, depending on who you ask, I'll give you a different answer.
There, there are several different answers. There's, there's not been a lot of clarification by the Treasury Department. There has been response to a lawsuit by the state of Ohio about the, that provision. And that is, you know, I, I've read that, I've read the, the kind of the main part of that lawsuit and the position of the, of the federal government about it. The, the takeaway that I had from the federal government's position on this lawsuit, which is not settled, so can't say it's, you know, an answer. But their position is that, so I think the state of Ohio's position was the federal government can't tell us what to do with our tax rate. So that, I think that, that was their argument. The, the response back was, well, sure, the federal government can make, can require, have requirements for monies. They do that all the time. So that's one answer. The, the other was that kind of how you define a tax cut is, is part of the discussion. And so does it mean that the actual amount of taxes can't go down? So you can, you can lower the tax rate, but you don't, you know, this is the constant yield versus tax rate kind of discussion. So there's that. There's arguments that if you lower the tax rate by something that's not ARPA-related, it, that should be able to go forward. And that may be legitimate, but I'd need to see more language about that. My, my feeling is that, that there are some activities that are not allowable, that are pretty clear. We can't just give people money so they pay less. I mean, so it's not just, you know, we can't just say, hey, everybody gets X amount of money just with the Zarpa funds and then you pay less money. I think we can likely be able to provide assistance to anybody who's negatively impacted by the pandemic financially that could help pay their taxes. We wouldn't lower their tax rate, but maybe we give them a grant for their, you know, for their needs that then they could pay their taxes with, that, those funds. The, the concept of a deferral of property tax, I think, does not go against the ARPA discussions one way or the other because the property tax still gets paid. It just may be deferred. So we, we are still waiting information. I think the, the government is not taking the hardest line on it, but they're also, they really don't want this to be a situation where people who have not been negatively impacted by the pandemic just get a bunch of money because their municipality got money. So, so I think, you know, recognizing that that, I think, was the intent, how that actually comes out in guidance from the Treasury Department, still to be deferred. So all that's to say is I don't know the answer. But we're trying to be very conservative. And, and in any event, we want to help our residents who've been negatively affected by the pandemic and we'll find some ways to do that. So there's that.
Yeah. So I asked that question because I, I tend to think in line items, which isn't logical for most. But, you know, if we are including things in our budget of which we would base our tax rate on, that in theory could be reimbursable under ARPA, that means the tax rate includes that line item because you got to make sure we pay for it.
Right.
Which means that that impacts the tax rate. Meanwhile, you know, come July, we might receive an ARPA reimbursement for that function. So I'm trying to, in my brain, figure out where certain things that might be reimbursable under ARPA should go. Is it that they still need to be worked into the budget to make sure that we're meeting what might potentially be the law, which is everything that, you can't use it to basically lower the tax rate for all because you didn't include a whole bunch of stuff that you wanted to do in expectation of getting this windfall. And therefore, the overall tax rate went down. Or is the interpretation, you know, so, so do we then create in essence an ARPA fund, right? So all of the things. So all of the things we bucketed that we were planning to pay for, but we may be reimbursed. And then we enter into the cycle like we did under the COVID funds, where we meet in October. We've gotten ARPA funds for X amount. We see all of these activities. We see how it impacts the tax, you know, we impact our revenues. Funds go into the general fund, you know, that kind of thing. And then maybe you don't necessarily see the benefits until you get to the next type, tax cycle, which is-
I, I think that's the way it's going to be. I think it's going to be that, you know, we've, we've envisioned a special revenue ARPA fund that gets identified, how it gets spent, likely in the fall. Maybe in the summer, depending on when all the information comes out. And then, you know, you'll have a little bit more experience by the time you get to your next budget cycle. You can do budget amendments, obviously we'll be spending those funds, but that's, that's one thing. There already though is some, some impact on the tax rate because of these ARPA funds in that we have reimbursed our lost revenue. If we just had to suck up not getting recreation department revenue and whatever for 1.2 million dollars, we would have to have more taxes or we would have to cut services. And so, so there, there already is some of that. But in my view, that's very much in meeting the, the definition of what ARPA can be used for. It was very, that part was very specific. So, you know, that's, it will be interesting to see how it all gets argued, but I think we are being conservative. And also, you know, I, I kept a number of things fairly tight. Obviously, a relatively small unassigned reserve. I only requested a one cent tax increase. Frankly, in another year, I would have asked for more. But both because this is a tough year and because we have these opportunities for some other funds, I was, I kept it to a minimum for, for what I thought was needed. And I think you'll find, it'll be very interesting to see what, what's the process for the FY23 budget. Obviously FY23 is not only going to have full information about how ARPA funds are used and you'll have a new city manager who will be working with you on kind of how to carry through your vision, but you'll also have the new property assessments. And so there'll be a lot of more information to work with for that. For what I think we, what we've put before you, other than the $300,000, this is, and the one communications position, this is an absolute maintenance of effort budget. And we had as staff many wishlist items that are not there. And, and we have a list of, there are things that, you know, we hope are able to be funded out of ARPA. There are, I think, a lot of, there's a lot of interest in what might be used, that, that 300,000 might be used for that really help advance a lot of the council goals that our departments are trying to carry out. And so there's that, but it's the, it's kind of the best that we could do on a really tight budget, recognizing that we just don't have the information.
And thank you for that. Quick question, I just, in light of everything that's going on legally for the city, has there, it looks like our legal services is pretty-
It's tight. I think you, I think you, I think we may need to put some money towards that, some additional funds. We also anticipated that, so kind of going into this budget, it's very interesting. We were looking at, kind of before ARPA, when we were thinking about this budget, we were thinking, well, the city attorney has gotten through some big things, right? They, he's gotten through a number of, the tree ordinance with you and whatever. So there was some big tasks that are kind of off of the list and some perhaps a little bit less going forward. We're also not having as much union negotiations, time spent on that kind of thing. So there's some less, some less legal expenses potentially. When ARPA came up, then it was like, well, there will be many contracts written and whatever, but those should be able to be paid from the ARPA funds. So as we get into kind of the, determining where those ARPA funds are, are to be spent, some of it is the management and legal costs that are related to distributing those funds correctly and managing and oversight. And so it's not, so those funds are not reflected in the budget, right? Here. But there may be other legal expenses that you need to be concerned with. And if so, that either comes from adding to that line through reconciliation or considering that you may need to, from unassigned reserve.
And one last question about, I know Councilmember Smith and I, and I think this is, should probably be on our wishlist and I agree with Councilmember DeBala, it might be helpful for us to revisit that priority wishlist. The internet access and broadband, you know, broadband capability, which I know is also an ARPA, I think it's on the, on the shortlist of ARPA items.
Right.
Did we include, and I apologize, I haven't had a chance to, to kind of scrub completely. Did we include any, any work on, in that regard in this year's budget? In terms of resident internet access?
In, in the FY21 budget?
In the FY22.
So it's not, it's not specified here, but it is certainly intended. And, and it would be through ARPA funds, although some of it is not that expensive. And so it is something that I think we could deal with. It's part of Jessica Jones's work with her staff on identifying how do we best go forward with that. And it's also, I think there's two ways that, that these kind of internet access, or three ways that the internet access and services can be provided. One of them is just, is what we're providing as, in facilities. So why, even while the library is being under construction, can people, where can people go to actually get on a computer, have good wifi access, have a printer? Printer's a big deal because many folks might be able to like, sit outside someplace and get the internet access, but they can't print the paper, right? So, so the printer is something that keeps being asked of us that is important. And so, you know, where can we put these kinds of stations around the city? What's the, what's the method during the, the transition time with the library? Another aspect is, there's between ARPA and some of the other infrastructure discussions and whatever, broadband is, is a topic that is in every, in every one of those discussions. And it's sometimes it's referred, it's in areas where there isn't broadband available. And then there's others where people just can't afford to get it. It's there, it's available, it's just not affordable. And so what does that take? And I, and fortunately, the administration now is looking at both of those things. Not just how do you get to a rural area, but how do you get to, even when there's, like we have, three internet providers available, what is it that we, or more, you know, how can you actually afford it? And then the, the final thing is just the equipment. And the, whether it's a laptop, a tablet, whatever equipment is needed, it looks like that's easily available through any of these various programs. If nothing else, that it's people who have had, been impacted by the pandemic, what kind of services can you provide them to be able to be in the work world, the school world, whatever? How, getting your, having a virtual appointment with your doctor. All of those things seem absolutely payable out of the ARPA funds as ways to assist people. And so I don't see that that is anything that we won't be able to do in, in a fairly straightforward way. So it's not identified here, but it's certainly, it's, it's top of mind because it's so important to all the different functionings of life right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to City Manager and the Deputy City Manager and all of staff for the incredible work that you've put into this budget proposal. I, I'm struck by how much work is unique to this year and not just trying to lay out a budget for each of the departments, as has been done for so many years. I, I'm not gonna ask a lot of questions, cause we can, we can handle any questions offline through email. But I did want to comment, since there had been some, quite a bit of discussion this year about the police budget and, and suggestions that we need to, to decrease the police budget. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, you know, I've been involved on the city council for many years and, and through that time, I've seen many concerns about the police department and, and the way they, they work within our community. There were concerns about excessive use of force, their bias in the way that they treated the public, bias within the department itself. And, and over militarization is a number of things through the years were problems. And several years ago, the council took this on finally and, and realized that it was, it was not individuals that were the problem. It was the culture of the department that, that didn't meet the character of Tacoma Park. And so we started to, to work on that very aggressively. And we were fortunate enough that we hired, we, I mean, the city hired. It wasn't the council, the, the city manager hired an excellent new police chief who appreciated the concerns that the council had with the, with our current department and laid out a plan for moving forward and, and improving the department and bringing it more in line with not just the character of Tacoma Park, but modern policing desires. The, when I hear about the, you know, decreasing the budget, the, the problem that I have with most of the things that I've heard is it's not talking about what are the things that need to be changed, that need to be taken away that would cause the reduction in the budget, or what are the things, the improvements, what's going to replace some of the functions? Are there new things that should be done that might even cause an increase in the budget? The, the chief has made, you know, changes in the, in personnel, made changes in the training and, and changes in procedures. And this has been an ongoing effort for the last few years. And I, and I can see coming out of the Public Safety Task Force, some, some enlightened suggestions for continuing that work and changing things within the police department and, and outside of the police department. Again, one of the things that, that I, I haven't seen at this point is if we're gonna, if we're gonna cut, you know, a budget because we're gonna maybe eliminate the canine, then I can understand that that's something, how to evaluate that, that here's a, a function that, you know, we have been performing that we may feel is better for the police not to be doing with the canine and that it would be a reduction in, in budget for that. But there could be also other things where we've talked about, and some people have talked about doing mental health, handling mental health issues in a different way and not just having police officers go out to do that. But again, that might be an, an increase in budget and might be within the police department, might be an increase in, in our community development area or the housing and community development department. Again, I, I haven't heard those kind of things and I think it's probably premature because we're, we've got the task force out there. But I, I really have trouble with the idea of, well, let's just cut the budget. Because that doesn't, that doesn't go towards solving a problem by, you know, being specific about what needs to be considered for exclusion and what needs to be considered for addition. Let me check my notes here. So anyways, what, that's kind of where I stand on the police department, so I'm not ready to do that. And I'll say, you know, people can look back and remember that it was the city manager tonight that started this, this evening's meeting by presenting the budget, the departmental budget. And so we're sitting here tonight talking about that. I don't think I'm gonna have all of my thoughts in a row before the end of this meeting. So this is a discussion that's gotta go on a little bit further, a little bit longer. So I just end with, with two comments. I, I appreciate the, the addition, the suggestion that we, we add some money for the stormwater. And I would like to associate myself with Councilmember Smith's suggestion that we increase that to 200,000. This is a huge problem within the city and I know that within Ward Four, you know, we need a couple bucks here to, to address some of those, those issues. And I know it's no better than any of the other boards in the city. And then I would also associate myself tentatively on not adding a position for racial equity. I look forward to hearing more on that before we're done with this budget. And other than that, I thank you for your time.
I just have a couple of things I didn't get to before. One is, we did talk about under the priorities, an ambassador and navigator program. And I didn't know if we thought that would fall under ARPA funds or what, where else that might go.
I actually think it would, but, but it's also one of those things, depending on how it gets set up, that it might continue past ARPA, so that's, that's part of a discussion. I think it certainly can get started and you can use it and figure out how that functions. But it may be a model that wants, that you want to continue after that too.
Great. And also, we have talked a lot about community engagement. We had that great presentation from Brick and Story. And I just wanted to know if that, if anything in that area is showing up in the budget or what thoughts were on that?
It certainly has been the, the topic of all the departments. We talk about how do we function and what do we need to do? It's part of the reason that we need another communications person. It's, it's also part of the reason we need a lot of the technology improvements. The, again, I think the model for how this really functions, we're, in a normal year, we would have just put perhaps some money for it to, to, to begin it. With ARPA, we will have to do it on a major scale. And so I think just thinking about it through that ARPA format and then, you know, in some respects, ARPA ends up being a pilot project to see what works and, and how to structure it. But I, there's not a department that they haven't talked about. How do we do community engagement? Where, how does it fit into all of the different aspects? And it's one of those things where we, truly, there's not an, a, a department that, that, that the projects don't need it.
That's my concern, is that we're talking about it and I, you know, I hear two of my colleagues who are not supportive of a chief equity officer, which actually does dismay me a bit. I think, you know, we've had a commitment to this work. I think we actually need to have a, even if we're with, working with another municipality in the region, some dedication to moving the racial equity work forward. I think that goes hand in hand with some of the engagement work. And I think for too long, we've talked about it. We've talked about doing this work and putting it on our staff without giving them the actual capacity and tools to do the work. And I think we need to stop doing that. I think it's burdensome to our staff. And I think it's unfair to them. So, and I see Samira popped up. I don't know if you want to speak to Samira.
I want to speak to it because the Brick and Story contract came through economic development and was focused around the engagement of the recreation center. In addition to that contract, we asked for recommendations on how to execute with community engagement in a better way. We know that our committees are not representative of our demographics. We know that there is a commitment to racial equity. And I just wanted to add the piece that, what is today, Monday, Wednesday? the, uh, senior leadership team, including, um, all of our recreation, um, team staff have been invited to kind of have that full presentation. It'll be Brick and Story's, um, kind of final service to the city through their contract. And we'll have a chance to actually talk it out as a team around some of the things that, um, stood out for them and some of their recommendations. We'll also have an op, an opportunity to just ask questions. And, um, you know, let the technical experts know what we've been doing, what hasn't worked right. Um, things that have had us scratching our heads for years. So the staff is going to be able to engage around that. Again, it's more conversation, as you just said. Um, it's not actually a policy change or, um, you know, funding toward additional capacity. But I do think we'll have a little bit more, um, understanding of, you know, of what the challenges are and what the possible solutions are.
Great. That'd be great. And if there's something to come out of that meeting on Wednesday that can go on the reconciliation list, we'd love to know about it. Um,
And I think everyone on this, everyone on this call is in that meeting, I think, responded to the meeting.
Great. Um, and a couple of other things. Um, one was when Crossroads was here, um, and did their annual report, they did request additional funding this year. And I don't know if that is built into the community partnerships or if there's been any consideration of that. I think it was additional money for the senior CSA. Um, so if someone can look into the, I don't know if that was looked into yet, but I know.
That contract is through housing, sorry. The contract, the contract is through, I thought you meant.
The CDA.
The other, yeah.
Farmers market, sorry.
Market, yeah. Um, I will say I do have proposed, um, use of those ARPA funds kind of in my wishlist that include the farmer's market. But Grace currently manages the actual contracts. I'll let Grace have a mo.
Thanks so much. Um, just so that the council is clear about how the Crossroads Farmers Market fits into the budget. So they operate through our community, uh, partners grant. It was through an RFP, multi-year RFP. Um, and it was, uh, $20,000 over a four-year cycle. And so for this budget cycle, um, I wanted to do two things. Number one, they are a foundation farmers market in our city. They should not be a part of this RFP cycle. So we wanted to segregate those dollars so that there is an ongoing commitment by the council and the city for a certain amount of money every year for the farmer's market. So they're not going through this RFP to prove themselves year after year. Um, and folks who've already been, uh, to the market this season know that they've made major improvements. Even, you know, the physical, um, layout of Ann Street looks different. We've been talking internally with them about more space, other locations. So, um, I hope that answers the question. We, that is separate. It will not be moving forward if the council approves, it will not go through an RFP. Um, we're just going to make it a foundational program, um, and have, just have ongoing funding. And I think that would help that, um, agency as well.
Great. And that's in the budget this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
It should be separated out as the, uh, farmer's market. And if Samira is still there, I know we had talked as a group about, um, a similar, um, position for the Laurel Avenue Farmer's Market. We just don't need to create more barriers for these organizations that are doing really a lot of great work.
Great. And to be clear, this really serves our Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. Um, what we are discussing internally is permanent infrastructure for our farmer's markets. So that's where I believe that, you know, ARPA funds or one-time funds for one-time expenditures. I think if we could create, um, a one-time expenditure around infrastructure and for both farmer's markets, it's going to be the answer for, um, support for them. Um, you know, we've, uh, the Laurel Avenue, um, Farmer's Market has been bounced around, um, due to COVID, um, in trying to extend their space and their social distancing needs. And similarly, Crossroads has some, some ongoing needs. So we believe that, um, the conversation internally, just to give you a heads up, is about, um, permanent infrastructure for our farmer's markets. Um, they are places to start for small businesses and I definitely consider them incubators in our city.
Great. Thank you. I just must've missed it when I was looking through it. I didn't see that line item. Glad to know it's there. Um, I think the other thing is, um, on, you know, I think we've talked about this $300,000 as if it will magically expand or like, um, put things in. Um, and so what I would actually like to do is on the reconciliation list, actually put the $36,000, um, um, for the tree canopy on the resolution. Take that out of, that's $300,000, um, actually make a commit, like have it be, um, the tree canopy money be in the budget, um, that we're actually doing it and not part of the $300,000 that we consider down the road.
So, so Mayor, uh, the, if I might, the more that you can identify specific amounts that you want in the budget, we'll just put them in the budget now. I mean, if there's, if there's some that you feel like you still want a pot of money because you're waiting for something or you're not sure of numbers, that's fine. But the more that you can be specific in this reconciliation process, then we'll apply it to the capital budget or the right department budget or whatever, um, as that item is so that we can just go ahead and build it into the budget.
Yeah. I mean, that's, I just would, personally, I would like to do that because I think we've, we need to move on the, the tree canopy work. We, uh, went through a lot of work over the last year. And I, I think that's, I'm concerned that that could be a place that may get delayed again. Um, and, um, you know, we were successful this year, um, delegate Charcutian moved forward with, um, the, um, the work along the purple line and the, with replanting of trees. And I just, I think this is a good opportunity to really make that commitment. So, um, I think, um, that is it for me, um, for tonight. So I don't know. Um, so, so far what I have on the reconciliation list is, um, the $58,000 savings from the CIP that the staff is adding. Um, council member Kovar has added a couple of things tentatively, um, taking off the street sweeper, taking out the $250,000, um, that was in the CIP, like when it was going to go to the housing reserve, taking out the atrium, um, relooking at some of the tier three public works, um, CIP items. And increasing, I just had increasing money for climate or sustainability work, um, but nothing, um, specific. So that's so far. Um, and then the tree, I don't know if it's, if you want me to add the tree canopy work to the reconciliation, but that's, um, the other item I had added.
Well, I was thinking of it as reconciliation and potentially coming out of the 300, but I understand your point about that. So to me, it's just something that we do want to have somewhere if we can.
For what? Sorry, I missed that.
The tree, the tree.
Yeah. Um, and then the questions I have that people still had, um, that as much as we can get for Wednesday night, but definitely by Monday night, um, council member Smith wanted to look at a comparison between hiring a staff person in the communications department versus a consultant. Um, we had lots of questions about the sweeper, um, street sweeper. Um, more questions about particularly looking at the fringe benefits in the police department. Um, what else did I have? Um, looking at, um, the, um, potential, what we are considering potential ARPA funds, money going to that. And councilwoman, um, Dabala had a number of other questions she had already sent in. I think that covers everything. Anything else? Does the staff have any questions for us?
No, I see.
Oh, sorry, councilman, councilwoman, raise her hand up. Sorry, I missed that.
My hand is brown.
Yeah.
Um, so I want to add to the, uh, reconciliation list, um, the removal of the K9 unit. Um, $50,000 for implementation of the Public Safety Task Force recommendation.
He said 60,000?
50.
50?
Okay. Yeah. And again, I know that we might be able to get some, ARPA funds may be able to cover some things, but in case we're not able to, um, yeah, if we could have those on the list, that would be great.
Cool. Awesome. All right. So we'll continue this conversation on Wednesday night. Uh, I know the deputy city manager is getting us more information and then, um, we'll have a final vote on reconciliation next Monday night. So lots of work to do over the next week.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.